...do you all stand face the flag? Mr. Say I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, we have a few changes to the agenda and a few additions. One change in particular, item O, consideration to approve the resolution, attachment J, blah, blah, blah. Let's, that's item O. Let's move that up to being one. So it'll really happen right after the approval of expenditures. We'd like, we'd like to just get these guys on the road because it'll be midnight otherwise. Um, second item, under, under R, appointment of absentee ballot. What do we call it, representatives or I forget the right word is. But in order for us to have our referendum election, we have to have judges and such with absentee ballots. I do have that somewhere. I will pass it out in the course of the evening with names of the ballot people. I believe you have it already. These are folks, there's a lot of paper tonight. So that's item R. And under S, addition of the September fourteenth work session timed to be determined after discussion. So those are our three changes. And I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Brenda.
Oh, sorry.
Seconded by Jerry. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Approval of the minutes from July twenty seventh, twenty fifteen. Everyone had an opportunity to look at that, just to take a minute to review.
I'll make a motion to approve the minute.
Motion by Rob. Seconded by Josh. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. So here's your presenters. Enrique, you are one of two, I believe, the one to one initiative update. Are you ready? This is four slides.
Alright, um, I just wanted to give you guys a quick recap, what went through last year. Uh, grades two through five will begin iPad mini. Uh, grades six through seven will get the new, um, noble chromebook. And, uh, grades nine to ten, Delvene. I didn't bring them today. Um, all the Delvenes will be again upgraded to Windows ten. Windows ten is just, it's right here. Combination of Windows ten and, uh, Windows, uh, sorry, Windows eight and Windows nine. Okay. Before all this happens, we'll be sending out emails this week, uh, emails and a video that is about creating, is explaining the whole process of the open house, the rollout and, uh, distributing of devices September fourteenth. So open house will, grades five, six, seven and ten will be able to sign insurance fee or pay insurance fees in submitting form, um, only because they went through the same process last year. So, um, they don't have to, uh, attend the rollout if it don't happen. Um, so long. Uh, we'll, uh, the new, um, parents and students will have to attend the rollout on September tenth. It'll be three thirty to six, um, PM. Um, again, we'll have, we'll be having a video playing in auditorium. Uh, stations will be set up to collect any insurance fees, any review forms and protection plan and financial questions, um, any parents may have or students. There'll be sections there for, uh, I'll be there, um, and everybody's there as well. And, uh, all devices will be given during class, September fourteenth. So we won't actually give them all devices, um, during rollouts just because it creates too much YouTube videos. And I don't know if we have the manpower to find, to collect and to answer questions. So during class time, um, Tim and Derek will be setting out, uh, classrooms for us to, uh, give out devices. Here's a copy of the protection plan. Option one, uh, just says, uh, it would be a twenty-five dollar fee, fifty dollars deductible. Option two, just simply you break it, you take for the device. Um, option three is, uh, you keep the device in class, don't take it.
And I, you should tell them that this went really, really well this year. It's really well.
And then here's a copy of the parenting agreement. Pretty much it says if something happens, it freezes, uh, it breaks, don't try to fix it. Don't use it someone else, bring it to me, bring it to the school and we'll take care of you.
What happens Enrique is they can't make it that night. Is, did they come in on to the office during the school day or something?
Yep, they just come in, um, get called one of us and we'll take care of it. Oh, yeah.
What do you see as the, um, biggest issue since the one to one initiative has begun? What was the biggest hurdle that you had to overcome or the district just had to overcome?
Biggest hurdle was the charging, the hardware itself. That was the biggest issue. It wasn't actually, uh, a human issue, it wasn't a teacher issue, it was the hardware itself having a charging issue. So, uh, we do have a seed of, uh, charging devices in the working. So if that comes up again, we'll, we'll be able to replace it right there. So the biggest issue was, uh, the hardware. That's why we went to Chromebooks for the new schoolers. And as soon as the device leases over with, with the Delvene group, it's going to go wrong.
How many, how many have we had lost, stolen, damaged beyond repair? How, how was that done?
Ooh, no loss. Um, damaged, I-
It was definitely under ten.
Under ten. And, and with damage, we, we do have the protection plan, so we just send it in. And, uh, we do have backup as well, so we give it to them right away and power outage is zero. That's part of the, the clean product I feel.
I've always had concerns as a guy who doesn't know much, that we're handing these out, but staff isn't prepared for it. Has that been an issue with preparation, that the staff is ready to integrate it? Everybody's different.
Well, being at, it was the first year, it was, it was a lot of learning involved. Um, we attended the Schoology conference just so we could integrate that with the devices. Uh, Schoology is the, the, uh, cool, uh, super platform that integrates grading, attendance, pretty much anything you would want, um, as far as integration goes with the classroom and the device we give it to the Schoology. And, uh, again, it was the first year, so we have a lot, uh, to learn and, um, we're telling Alfred, Amy.
Yeah, I'm going to speak to that.
Yeah.
If you want, I mean, that's a, that's a double ever in my presentation, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I can speak to that further.
And so the infrastructure is good, we don't have classes waiting to get online or-
Oh, no, infrastructure's all right. Yeah, it's great, the wireless is great.
Last year was unbelievable, I mean.
No downtime, I think one, and that was just, uh, power outage, which went down, but it came back okay.
We, we had times at the ALC two, three years ago where we didn't have internet for a couple of days. And when you have an all online program, no internet, that's not good. We didn't have any downtime last year, zero. So kudos to our infrastructure.
Any other questions for Enrique? Thank you. Amy, come up here.
Okay. Um, as I'm logging on, I, I have a packet of my PowerPoint presentation. It says digital learning for all learners. If you'd like to take a moment and kind of scan through that and make any markings or things like that. As I'm getting logged on, that would be really good.
So, so.
Um, I'll get out the smoke signal. Yeah, you like that? That was a good moment. So I'm going to speak to a lot of the professional development stuff. And I'm just going to, fair warning, I'm going to kind of whip through this pretty quickly. Um, because you can actually read, in fact, I kind of wrote it kind of like a little bit of a textbook, like a flip book. You can read through all the slides and all that. But like Enrique said, um, Tim Hodges, Enrique, myself, Cindy DeRozier and Sandy Scherrit attended the Schoology work, uh, conference this summer in Chicago to try and get some more help and ideas and, um, to integrate this learning management system into our programming, um, programming here. And I think that, that was like very, very helpful and that's helping us have a good vision. But, um, I started taking some steps towards this, uh, last year. There's, uh, three categories of tech users. And there's fugitives, who don't like new technology, the immigrants, who will adopt it as they see it useful and necessary to them. Most, some people attribute this to birthdays, like if you're born before, you know, or, or, yeah, before nineteen eighty, it's a good way to categorize people. And then there's digital natives, and that's the kids, the students that we're educating right now. Um, and kind of we've been through this here, this is already on page two. So, um, it's basically just a way to say that these kids have never known a time without technology. Um, you know, Cooper's one, my oldest born in nineteen ninety-four, and that's the year the internet came online. So he's never known a time with that. Um, but we talked, we heard this this summer at our Schoology conference, that we're all digital migrants. I mean, we've all adapted to technology. I mean, there was a time when the Casio, uh, watch that we used to, you know, use in class and stuff like that. It's so huge, and think about even the cell phones and all that. So teaching and learning is evolving too because of this. Um, and if you think about the way teaching and learning used to be versus where we'd like it to go, it's also evolving. That model in the corner is a model that I'm actually using to help with professional development. There's three areas. There's content knowledge, pedagogical knowledge and technological knowledge. Content knowledge is, most teachers are pretty comfortable with their content they teach. Pedagogy is the art and craft of teaching, how well you teach, the art and science of teaching. And then technology knowledge is how to use technology to be a better teacher, to bring that content to your students. So this, uh, digital learning assessment that I have, which is the rest of my presentation, I got this from a MOOC that I took. And if you've never heard of a MOOC before, a MOOC is a massively open online course that's available for anybody to take. Um, these just happen to be for teachers and it's, um, was on the digital learning transition. I, um, chair staff development, I co-chair it for the district. I'm the chair of the high school, middle school, staff development. And I wanted to learn more about how can I help people, you know, make this transition. One of the things we had to do was take this digital learning assessment. And, um, at the time this was going on, Enrique was on family leave. So I asked Tim to sit down with me and kind of went through the questions and came up with a score that Hannah followed, our score was four to, four to ten. And I'll talk about this briefly, what this means. So it actually gave, and it's a really great document. Um, that's going to kind of test to that. It was really good, detailed, good information. So I, where the little X's are, this is what we're going to focus on in staff development, is getting into still twenty-first century skills, deeper learning, your content knowledge, and also being good digital citizens, how to be online and be appropriate, responsible, respectful and all that. Um, this is our current use of technology from that assessment. Um, we don't have very, very many areas of need. We're doing pretty well in a lot of things. Again, this is our learning environment. We have some areas, maybe more areas of need here. And some of that comes from just this is all new, um, it's happening really, really fast, this transition. And so some people aren't, aren't really sure about that. Um, this is actually, um, the bottom of page five. And this actually was a rubric that gave it a breakdown for what all those areas are. Four of four out of five because of that right there. District leaders, we've identified Bible news directions for the school. We want to adopt the one-to-one initiative. We've talked about the possibilities and scenarios. What we really have is created both standards and benchmarks and learning targets for where we want this to go. What do we want this to look like? What do we want to accomplish by having students to have access to technology? There are seven years, curriculum instruction, use of time, all the way on down with budget and resources. And then the last piece that is talked about, and I've heard this over and over again from people, is leadership. You have to have good admin in places willing to support people's, um, use of technology and trying out, taking a risk. So all I did with the rest of these is I just screenshotted each of the years. I put the little, wherever there was some discrepancy, so on this one you can see for curriculum instruction assessment, the only zero we got was on collaborative relevance and applied learning. And then I just put the little rubric there for why we have that area. And I don't want to go into too much detail because it'll take a lot of time to do that. But I want this maybe to become part of maybe a conversation that the board has about, okay, let's make some plans for what we want to accomplish with this. Here's year, uh, year two, which is use of time. We got all zeros on this. And a big part of the reason is use of time is thinking about time differently. Like maybe your kid doesn't have to be in your seat, in your chair. Problem is we have, and these are all my bullet points, we have a lot of catching up to do. The state even has to catch up with this, um, when it comes to, you know, funding, um, these kinds of things. Technology network hardware, this is what we were pretty good on. Um, we had some really good scores on this and only a couple, like discrepancies. Here's data and privacy, there's actually one that was a mistake, so I put that in there, that we're actually at seven on that. Data policies and procedures, though, that was a zero. Um, because it, we need to investigate federal, state and local laws on privacy and security of data and education systems. We, we review policies and procedures on safety, security and privacy in other districts. I, I didn't know anything about that. And I maybe, you know, I don't know, Tim will speak to that. I don't know what our policies and procedures are about, about that.
But we're doing, you know, some good things obviously with, you know, we're addressing cyberbullying and things like that. Community partnerships, this is an area of concern for a lot of school districts. I heard this in taking this class, that a lot of them don't know how to reach out to make this a community partnership, this one-to-one initiative. So there's some zeros, this is a big area of need. And the why the zeros, I put that on the next page. If you actually, um, go to, hey, the page nine, it actually kind of breaks down what each of those zeros are when it comes to involving the community. Professional learning, this is the one I feel most confident about. And probably it's because I'm the one that's in charge of that, or one of the people in charge of that. And I, and Tim and I both agree, this is one area, we've done some really good things. One of which is, if you can, and Bob, to speak to one of your questions. Last year we decided that all staff development would take place in Schoology. If you're going to, if you're going to, um, teach students using Schoology, then you're going to learn using Schoology. So we made a conscious commitment that we would set up all of our staff development courses in Schoology. And anything that, that you did, if it was a schedule, if it was a, hey, I have to watch a video and we're going to do this this fall on bloodboard pathogens and take a quiz on it, it all happens in Schoology for staff. So that they get the feeling of what it's like to be a student, so then they also would know what it look like, looks like to be a teacher or whatever. And just think of this Schoology learning management system. It's your teacher's old, um, digital, you know, it's their files or whatever, their file cabinet. One thing we talked about though, um, this summer is like looking at moving beyond that. It's not just a place where kids go and grab their worksheets and then fill them all out and turn them into you. It's moving beyond that. So we're going to talk about that and work on that. Budget and resources, again, this scenario that I think we're doing pretty well in. Remember, uh, the last one though, learning return on investment. I think that is something the board really needs to think about and talk about. What is it that you want from this? Um, is it college and career readiness? Like, is that our ultimate goal with using technology? Do we want students to be comfortable going into a college course, logging onto their class and having to post discussion threads and things like that? Is, is that where we want to go? Is it MCA test scores and better grades? Is it math skills? Is it literacy, whatever? That is an area that we're really, um, we haven't really targeted and made that decision about as, okay, I'm giving you this device. What does that look like when you're all done with it? What do we really want out of this? Because I will say this, it's not test scores that improve. The data, it does not support that technology is going to increase test scores. No more than having a calculator is going to make you a better math student. I mean, that, and that's the reality of it. It's we have to figure out how to utilize technology to work smarter, not harder, help students navigate through this, you know, twenty-first century, uh, learning and work that they're going to be participating in, so. So that probably is good as we get into this last area of leadership is what is our shared forward-thinking vision for digital learning? Um, and that was our area of need when it came to what we want to do. But for the most part, um, like I said, you know, and you can, you can read through this, we're, we're at a three. But how do we get to envisioning and planning and staging? How do we create transformation and effective use of technology to increase learning? And these other areas we're doing pretty well in, um, when it comes to our leadership. Um, Tim has been very good. We've talked about this, that he wants, he tells staff, take a, take a risk, take a chance, see what happens.
I'm going to go to bed for Derek too, just because I think you don't work in that building enough. But I am just blown away when I go to the elementary and see the things that Derek is doing at the elementary as well. There's never even a staff meeting that he's not tying in some new app or technology or something. It's just, it's a really remarkable thing. And I'm lucky enough to see both buildings. You see Tim, I, I see both of them doing that. And Enrique has really added a lot too.
Tim-
He's still, he is still here.
Tim couldn't be at one of our one-hour tech meetings, so he Skyped in.
Yep.
Probably like the Wizard of Oz up there with his screen kind of thing or whatever, talking. So, yeah, so you can look more into that. And so what, um, the area of focus for staff development is going to be curriculum instruction assessment. How do we use technology to improve what we teach, how we teach, in order to make that more impactful, effective? That we can monitor and assess, uh, performance, individual student performance and classroom performance to increase student achievement. And now what, as we're moving forward, um, our leadership is in place. We need some, maybe some frameworks, uh, permission again to try and fail and all that. And we want to move, this is another model that's used a lot in technology. It's called the Samer model. Um, we don't just want to substitute. Don't just take and put this on the iPad and then like say that you're now using technology. We want to move to where we start maybe, um, improving PowerPoints, maybe modifying our lessons and things like that. And then maybe even redefining in ways that are transformational. So moving forward, these are the things that I'm, that we're thinking about with staff development, which is best practices is always in mind. Um, what's going to get, um, the best results of our students, whether that be test scores in our own classrooms or MCA test scores or ACT test scores or whatever measurements we determine is important. Moving forward, we have the RTI model coming down the pipe, that's next year. And the thing that we have most control over is our core classroom instruction. And then this gets into more things like special education and things like that. So using technology for those areas, so. We're at a four, um, we're envisioning, um, we need to, we need to get some steps going to get us into planning and staging. And there's some ideas about how you can do that in that rubric there, so. We attended a workshop at the beginning of, um, or in January, beginning of the year with Will Richardson, who's kind of known for being, uh, pretty forward-thinking in the world of technology. And he talked about that transformation is not about more technology. Um, it's about rethinking our roles as teachers and thinking about how we can use tech in ways that, that can really create new ways of learning that maybe we hadn't thought about before, so. And this is what staff development, this is what we do. We analyze what our needs are in our PLCs, we design action plans, we're going to develop those plans, we're going to implement those plans and evaluate what is going on. And, and technology will be all a part of that, so. I like that Donald Rumsfeld, known knowns, known unknowns and unknown unknowns. And it, this, this is just a basic framework for kind of starting some conversations. I hope for all of you, you would maybe take a little time to look and then think about this, um, return on investment piece. I think is a really big part of it. Um, what do you hope for our students when they're all done with our school and with using these devices? Do you want them to have better ACT scores? Do you want them to be prepared for the world of, you know, college and work? And my hope is that you continue to support the, the staff's time and our need to have some time to really work with this and think about how we can use this in, in different and more impactful ways. So. What percentage of the staff took the survey?
Um, I think it was in the upper end, it was in the top.
That we had a survey at the end of the year? Yeah, yeah. So we have, um, some good data about that too, um, staff's needs and stuff like that. And so we're going to use that, um, to also help with our, with our planning. So if you ever feel you have any questions about any of that and you'd like to-
I don't know that I have a question. I guess I have more of a comment than a question.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, you were talking about direction. And I believe when this one-to-one initiative, initiative came in and the discussion started, I believe the original drive was for these to better prepare, the Canopall students to be better prepared for the next phase of their life, which would be college or-
College and work, yep.
I don't know that we had looked at as, or that we intend their test scores to just jump, jump through the roof because we don't, I don't believe any of us thought that was going to happen.
Yeah.
It was more of, the students need to be prepared for life after school.
Yeah, okay.
And then their original strategic plan, and that's where he's remembering that. And Kurt was a part of that too, so were you, thank you. Um, and that's why we're going to review that again tonight is what that end result is where we want it to go. We want them to all be lifelong learners in, in whatever field they're going to go to. You know, we talk about when you go in to get your car checked, they don't just check your car anymore. They hook it up to a device and they run the computer system on your car. I mean, we're not talking about just college-bound kids.
No.
It's exactly, you're remembering that correctly, that's, that's what we talked about.
I believe it's also we're going to try, this was to help enhance their learning, you know, to make it more exciting. Um, and I'm going, I'm just going to challenge you. We went to a WTEC meeting here last week and there was a concern saying, you know, are we, are we too aggressive with this? Are we going forward too fast, too aggressively? Is this is what we're going to rely learning to be on? Is this, but i- is this considered, like you said, a calculator? Is this just another tool where Schoology is out there and we're using Schoology? But the question is, are we going at, are we putting all our eggs in one basket? And we're not looking back and saying, what have we done? Have we, have, how are we measuring our success with this? Uh, because basically we're going into the twenty-first century and it's like this is, everybody's getting on board and this is where we're going, this is the direction we're taking. But are we looking back and we're saying, are the steps we're taking productive? Are they, are they useful? Are we taking things away from teachers because we're going this direction? You know, are we having great teachers out there and say, you know what? I, I don't know if I want to teach necessarily this way. I'm a great teacher because of the way I, I, I apply myself and how I interact with kids now. You know, are we, are we doing some, are we damaging things that way? You know what I'm saying? And response, whatever, I'm, I'm, that's a question that was imposed.
I don't quite know how to speak to that because, um, I heard in a staff development workshop once that if you're, if you're not getting pushback, you're not pushing hard enough. Um, and our students are going off into a world of work and into a world of learning where, and you know that with kids in college, it's all online in some way, shape or form. Even a little bit where you have to log on and post and check and, and do all those kinds of things. Um, I don't know if every teacher has to be digital. I don't know if that's going to be the best bang for buck. But I can tell you that I'm very excited about the opportunity to throw out five questions on the screen. Have a kid either get out their iPad or iPod or whatever they got a device available, punch in a code, look at five questions, answer real quick. And then I get instant results that tells me, you know what, they don't know what gentrification is. So I have to go back and I have to reteach that. And to have that kind of instantaneous feedback, where in the past, if I'm going to say old school, not to be mean, but old school, I'd get that little quiz, I'd go through it, I'd correct. And then the next night, I, you know, oh, I'd find out, oh, they don't know about gentrification. And then I go the next day and speak to that. Or I could instantaneously speak to that. Within five minutes, I would know whether or not my students know this concept or not. And then we can move forward.
So when we, when we look at that too, Amy, when you say you, you, you got that information right there, but it doesn't reflect on this test scores, it doesn't necessarily mean that the kids don't know this. It's just the tests don't always show what they know.
Yeah, and the thing that we're all working on in our PLCs is how to improve our practice. And our measurement in PLCs is our test scores. And one of the things we're working on this fall and into the winter is looking at how do we make better test questions? And even too, how do we make sure that those test questions are not just hooked up into our whatever nice little classroom world? How about the bigger picture with Minnesota, you know, obviously Minnesota's standards, we all got that going on. These kids are taking the ECT tests, um, which is a really good benchmark for determining whether or not they are ready for college. If we can hook our test scores and start thinking about how we can do it in our classroom and hook it into the bigger picture, that's going to help them be more successful. And, and if nothing else too, another one is Accuplacer. Every VOTEC student, every vocational student has to take the Accuplacer and demonstrate competency in math and English. And if they don't, they take those remedial courses that they get, they pay for, but they get no credit. It doesn't go towards a degree. If we can target our math and our English curriculum into those Accuplacer tests to help those kids be better prepared, save them seven, eight hundred bucks or more, that's actually, in my opinion, a good bang for buck. Thanks.
Always speak to the past.
Thank you. Thank you.
I seem to remember we had conversations about return on investment, and if you were leading that charge at one point.
Can you turn that off?
What were we getting out of it?
I think so.
I think that's a question that the board's been handling.
Kevin, you don't need it for any...
Approved the first.
Maybe we don't need it. Kevin, did you need that?
So now we take the reins of government.
Thank you. Moving forward, public forum, does anyone have anything that they wish to speak about on behalf of the district? Okay, we're moving forward. Finance report, attachment B.
First part of the finance report, attachment B here is the cash flow worksheet, industry controls, your bank balances, nothing real too to note here. As we kind of go through, we'll get cleanup payments in August, most of that stuff would come through ideas, and you see we've got an okay cash fund balance, to the point where it looks like we're not going to have to do anticipation borrowing, and that even includes most of the way down the expense side, you see $400,000 for the Phase One boiler, I put that in there expecting that we would possibly pay that out of general fund cash until our project went through. And that's still going to probably be the case, but we'll be able to reimburse through the financing with that. But even with that in there, we'd be okay with cash flow and not having to do some short-term borrowing, at least as far as I've got scheduled out, which is fiscal year. The next couple pages, just kind of give a brief disclaimer before we go through it, it's a kind of a summary of the cash, the fund balances, sorry, between July 2015, the last month reconciled, and July 2014. All the information for 2014 is post-audit, so those numbers are all after audit, whereas the July 2015 audit hasn't come through yet, we haven't completed that. Numbers in 2015 most likely will adjust and change, but this is where we are sitting at for cash. Now, the total dollar amount of cash, 2.9 million, that won't, but where it falls within funds may adjust and slide as we go. I don't want to mislead anybody, but just so you kind of have that disclaimer, these numbers are pre-audit. That being said, general fund, we're at, as we sit right now, real close where we're at last year, cash-wise, about 20,000 behind, food service, about 10,000 ahead, and we've scheduled some purchasing already, spent some of the fund down, fund balance down in food service. Wendy's got a stove coming, plus some other items to help spend, but fund balance down, equipment that we'd need within the kitchen, which is real good, probably about 18 years ago, we were talking about having to move funds from general fund to cover food service, so it's nice we're able to get some things and keep that kitchen up. Community Ed is doing well, about 20,000 behind over last year, but the fund balance in community ed very well. Debt service is a little bit ahead, we don't have too much control over that, that's our mortgage payment essentially on the buildings. Trust and Agency is a scholarship fund, we're ahead in debt department currently as it sits, and then the last two funds are the OPEB trust and the debt service on that. We haven't taken our draw out of the OPEB trust, and that might be a conversation with finance committee to see if we forego that for one year, maybe push, taking that out of here, we might be able to do that, but that might be a discussion we have at a finance committee, committee level. And then the 47, the OPEB debt service fund is just the payment of the debt service on that. So, the next few pages are just going to be the detail, if you want to see what kind of went in and out. There's really not a whole lot, a significant point out, generally as we said, in August is where you see the cleanup payments for the ideas, the 10% from the prior year already comes in, and that was August payments, so you'll see that next month as we go through. Trying not to give too much of this detail, it becomes kind of monotonous, and we just show it to every other, or so board means, having to choose this one as one to present it to you. Next page, the backside, the only real thing to put out there is Trust and Agency in Fund Nine, you see we paid $25,000 out last year in July, we just made the scholarship payments at the end of July, this year we made it being of August, so the timing part is off. When you receive the August bank rec, you'll see no payments in Trust and Agency for 2014, but they came out in 2015, so it's just a timing issue on the scholarship fund. Other than that, if there's any questions, I'll do my best to help answer.
Anything for Mr. Davison?
I'd like a motion to approve.
Seconded by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. We have no old business under new business, we have our usual lunch report, personnel items, and attendance report under the consent agenda. I think we have a few here, so why don't you just take one moment to review.
Substitution.
Yes, and then we have one other addition to that. Under district-wide, we would, we'd be looking to accept the resignation of Josh Banks as the soccer, assistant soccer coach. Once you are ready, I would look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Josh, second.
I'll second.
By Jerry. Further discussion?
I just would like to clearly state it, I know we say it every year, there's always some question about how many football coaches are at the, on the field, just remember that they take that one stipend and divide it up however they want. So when you see additional football coaches being added, am I saying this right Jake?
Yep.
They're taking one stipend and dividing it how they choose to divide it. So, sometimes you'll see a lot of people on the sidelines, but it's still the exact same cost, it's how they decide to pay.
That comes to the booster club, is that right?
Well, no, it's our stipends to them.
Our stipends.
There are a couple booster pay ones, that pay the score and goes to... Yeah, but...
There's no additional cost, what they did, quite as personnel, if they don't call it once, and then they can extra some football boosters.
Are those statements supposed to come through the board though? Or not, because they're through the board, because then your state connected, it's got the board has to approve.
You know, it's one thing the football boosters aren't put onto the school, they're not paid through the school. I think they're put on the list to approve because they're coaching us yet.
I wonder if their employees, if they're supposed to go through the board. My question is, do they, though they're paid by boosters, does that stuff come through the board, because all states are supposed to?
I think it must be.
We run every, anyone that's going to be in front of your children, we run through you, you see all of them.
We do all, we do all the advanced checking on them.
We do background checks.
No, I think you got...
Stipends.
If they're paid through the boosters, yeah, we, that's not for us to decide if we're paying that or not, I mean, that's, they're paying them.
Okay, just comes through the district, that's what I'm wondering, because all stipends that come.
But you don't approve those stipends? Do you want to?
No.
I'm asking a question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Approval of expenditures, attachment D.
Thirty-five, nine.
Did you count that district?
Yeah. Program change? That's what we pay every month.
That's your special ed cost?
So how much has it changed from when we had here versus going to Redding? For some reason, I just don't think herself, it should never matched up in my mind, that money would be proportionally...
We do have to wait and see, you know, there was a lot of changes in cross-subsidy this year, and we need to wait, Josh and I have attended a ton of meetings on that, you know, some of the reimbursements coming in for special education has gone up dramatically. I feel like the legislature did try to make a decent effort to try to change some of those things. We know that we're going to save some money on transportation, we're running one bus over to Redding, so there'll be some cost savings there. As far as programming goes, you know, until we see what's going to actually happen over there, I just don't know if we can question everything yet. Anyone in my office can tell you that I challenge every bill that we receive from Goodview County District, Lori, Josh would attest to that. I do question them, they're all very legit, I'm watching it very, very carefully, I promise.
We've had that conversation here.
We'll continue to monitor. I do see some cost savings coming though with the new, the new reimbursements, I really do think we're going to see some positive things.
Any other questions? Now, I would look for a motion to approve the expenditures as shown.
I'll make a motion, one second.
Jerry on the motion, Kurt on the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. B1, which has been moved up from O, consideration to approve the resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the energy services agreement. I just handed out an amendment, I believe, to that, didn't I?
You did.
And that increases the scope and services.
Well, we're learning a lot of things, aren't we guys, as we go through this whole process? There's a lot of resolutions that need to be, take place, and there's certain timing of everything, and I'm going to turn it over to you, I know this to me real quick, but give kind of a synopsis of why we're doing another resolution on energy services.
Kevin's delegateing again, so...
Yeah, he's a good one, says me.
Thanks for moving us up on the gym, appreciate that. So you might recall at the last board meeting, there were two resolutions that were passed. One was approving the tenure plan, essentially approving 11 and a half million dollars worth of projects. And you also might remember from some of the presentations that there's different funding sources for some of the work. So some is going to be done through long-term facility maintenance bonds, some work is being funded through guaranteed energy saving program. So the resolution that was passed last time was for nine and a half million dollars, there about, and that is going to be funded through bond sole, and then levy through the long-term facility maintenance bonds that are sold. The energy portion is done under a different statute, and that requires a public notice. And when we came to the last board meeting, we didn't know what scope was going to be approved, so there wasn't an ability to put the public notice in the paper ahead of time. So this is somewhat of a formality, but we did do the public notice, and it just identifies it when the paper, and it says that the board intends to award the energy portion of the contract at tonight's meeting. The dollar amount, I'm not sure, I think what we had included in there were just X's, we didn't actually have a dollar amount, because in working with Aylers, we didn't know the exact dollar amount that would be funded through the long-term maintenance, long-term facility maintenance bonds, and what would be funded through the energy, and now we do know that, and that's the 2,091,681. And so, that's going to be repaid out of the general fund through the energy and operational savings that are going to result from lighting retrofits, control systems, insulation, tuck pointing, things like that. So this is the energy portion of that. Again, ideally, we have all three resolutions at the same board meeting, but we didn't know what scope of work was going to be approved at the last one, we didn't know exactly how it's going to be funded and financed, and we needed Aylers' input on that, so that's why we're back for the energy portion approval tonight.
And with all the information overload we get on the scope of the project and the funding of the project, ultimately, these are cap bonds, capital appreciation, is it?
Capital facility bonds. So in discussions with Aylers, they worked up a couple of different models, and elected to go away from the capital appreciation bonds, so it's the more traditional type of bond sale that you've done in the past. Because remember, the cabs were, where you're going to defer making any principal interest payments for a number of years and then do it later. So they've structured, based on not using the cabs, but doing more traditional capital facility bonds for that $9 million worth of work. That hasn't been finalized, I think they're going to come back to you...
We're going to have a finance meeting, I'm going to propose it tonight, September 9th, so we can kind of finalize that.
And they'll be back to you with options on that. So you essentially approved the project size and the scope, you haven't finalized exactly how that will be financed, and they'll have a recommendation for you at that meeting.
Yep.
When you threw out that as a possibility for us cap, after further research with Aylers, it was decided that the facilities would be a better option for us, like...
Yeah.
I'm kind of asking a question.
Well, if you remember, yeah, if you remember that day, that was the, when I had just heard about it, I wasn't well-versed in it, nor was Josh, we were very excited about the possibilities. What it came down to after doing a lot of research with Aylers and kind of going through it, if you were a big district like Rosemont, Apple Valley, for example, they know that that growth is going to be there in 20 years, and you can anticipate on more students being there and that money coming back. If your growth is steady, you don't want to add on those extra years. And basically, Jeff, when he got back from his vacation, he wasn't upset by that option, it just didn't match what our district needs were. So, we decided what is going to save the district the most money and not impact our taxpayers. So, and again, we'll have a facility meeting and kind of go through all those options on September 9th, where Jeff is going to come down and be at our meeting, so.
So Jeff, the 2.1 million, basically the 2.1 million is to energy savings and programs?
Yep, so that, that won't have any impact on taxpayers, that's going to be funded, you know, it'll be financed, but then all the savings will cover the debt service.
That's over like a 10-year process.
Fifteen. Yep, a 15-year term.
So when I read all of this before, now it's old news.
I spent hours looking at this.
Just had a command of it, huh?
Well, I was better on it than when I started out. But Jeff will be at that meeting, he'll get the services.
He is, he's going to, he's going to come down. And Bob is on our facility, or...
The 2 million, that takes us, this is in addition to the 9 million that we approved?
It's, yeah, so you approved nine and a half.
Right.
And the tenure plan was 11 and a half, so the nine and a half, so this is the energy portion, so yeah, the two plus the nine and a half gets you to what that tenure plan was that was approved.
We approved the one point, was it 1.1, but then the, we were going to get money back because we had the tenure plan in place that the state money would reduce by 1.1 million or 1.5 million? That took us down to the 9 million, right?
That, what, now that's the, that's the debt, that's how, that's going to provide, that's going to reduce the levy, that's the equalization portion, that's 22% of the long-term facility maintenance bonds. So whatever that debt service dollar amount is, I don't have that spreadsheet, maybe Kevin can find it, but whatever that debt service amount is on an annual basis, 22% of that will be covered by the state.
And we want to remember on all of this, we want to keep these separate. Aylers is our financial institution, those numbers we need to make sure come from them, and the programming of everything comes through UNESCO, but they work really well together.
Right, but we approved the dollar amount for the project which came from UNESCO.
Correct.
And that is going to be a top of that amount?
No, 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 it's part of that amount. So you approved that tenure plan, then you approved those 11 and a half million dollars.
This brings it down, it's the equalization.
Capital facility bonds were going to be nine and a half, okay? The remainder is going to be funded through the energy, that's the 2 million. So nine and a half plus the two is the 11 and a half that was approved for the overall, so the overall scope board has not changed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, so what we have on here is an action item, we need to approve the resolution, wait to confirm the amount, I guess, is what we say. So I'm looking for a motion and a second, and then it'll be a resolution vote.
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution approving and authorizing execution of the energy service agreement in the amount of, was it 2,091,681?
Thank you Kurt, motion made, second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Josh. Further discussion? Brenda?
Can we do a resolution now?
Yes.
Resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an energy services agreement be resolved by the School Board of Cannon Falls Area Schools ISD 252, State of Minnesota as follows. The School Board of School Board of Cannon Falls Area Schools ISD 252 does hereby certify that the following is true, complete, and correct copy of a resolution adopted at a School Board of Cannon Falls Area Schools ISD 252 School Board meeting duly, appropriately called and held on the 24th day of August 2015. The quorum was present at said meeting, that a majority of those present voted for the resolution, and that said resolution is set forth in the meetings of said meeting.
We need to hold on, are we good now?
Nope, that's good.
Kurt?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay, that's passed, five, six, zero, four. Okay, and we're going to schedule the finance meeting, or we've already...
Well, intentively, I brought it tonight because Josh had about a 30-minute conversation with Jeff today, I had some email correspondence with him, Josh and I both feel that he should be at our next finance meeting. I really want to have that before that next board meeting, so I think it's you and Kurt, or my finance committee again this year?
That is true.
Okay, September 9th would 8 o'clock work, or would 9 o'clock be better? Or Kurt, what with your schedule, that's going to be...
Early would be better.
Six.
Jeff needs to drive down, he could probably do a seven, seven thirty.
I could do an eight, I mean, I could swing that, the longer I got...
It should be only a half an hour meeting?
Yep.
Okay, the week is this?
It's on Wednesday.
And Labor Day is what day is it?
It's Monday. You have time?
I will be stopping the wild bass at that point in time.
Well, that's important, too.
In the Thunder Bay.
Are you gone that whole week?
Yes, I am.
Would the following Monday work for you?
I would be available on the Friday before, whatever day that would be.
Feel that, like, we can't do that.
No.
I bet you someone could absolutely, if it was the Thunder Bay.
The Friday before?
Yeah.
Why does it give us no sign of prep?
Well, you were saying Sunday, you were saying Monday, though. I'll be going from Labor Day on to that Thursday evening.
Okay.
So I would be available Friday.
You're saying a week from this Friday?
I'll raise the date as a possibility.
Okay, I'm sorry, that'd be two weeks.
Per calendar, yeah.
The Friday before, it's my...
We'll notify you over an agreeable date and...
I'll email it out, Josh and I talked to Jeff and figured it out, thanks.
I can't miss that, by the way.
No.
Very important.
Yes, absolutely, we'll make sure of it.
Okay, we are at item C, consideration to approve the mandatory policies from MSBA. You have the list, that's from E.
Right, I feel like after all the work you guys did getting through all those policies, and again, thanks to Jeff Kaderlich and Laurie Hansen, we have now kinda finalized it where it gets easy. Now you, these are the mandatory ones, thank you guys, the mandatory ones that you have to have on the, and you do this every single September, so that's your list of mandatory ones.
Are there two readings to have or not?
What's that?
We don't have to do two readings?
Nope, these are your mandatory ones.
I'll make a motion to approve the mandatory policies, yes, yeah?
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Josh. This is a procedural item, we seem to do this.
Yes, right.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consideration is set in taxation dates.
Bob, I think you had a suggestion that you had talked to Laurie about, December 14th, I believe, or...
Yes. December 14th?
Yep.
And what that allows you to do, you won't have to have two meetings in December, but it kinda puts it in the middle, so you don't get behind.
So I look for a motion to approve 1214 as the truth in taxation date.
I'll make a motion.
Jerry on the motion?
I'll second.
Rob on the second. Further discussion?
We're done.
Six, usual, six, yeah?
Six. You guys are okay with that? Jerry and Rob, you okay with the time?
Yeah, great.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consideration to approve the district's acceptable use agreement.
You've also seen this every year, this is important, you have this in for the state, we get some E-rate money according to this, so if you have any specific questions, I can help you out with those, but nothing has changed.
I'm in motion for the acceptable use agreement. Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to accept a resignation.
The first one is Eric Mace, fourth grade teacher, this one came in very late, but under the circumstances, he has family in the community that he's moving back to, it was a good match for him, he's, he really wants to be close to his kids, so we thank him very, very much for his service, he was a great teacher.
Do you like this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Take a motion, Rob.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Eric Mace.
Seconded by Brenda. Motion by Rob, Rob?
I feel this position is late in season, isn't that gonna be a problem?
Yep, it's next on, it's on the agenda for you, we've got a name already, it's number...
I thought you were gonna post it, but...
It's down.
No, it's filled, we already, we're hiring, so I'll give you a name tonight.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Sometimes, you know, because of the timeframe that we're in, there's a need to move forward, even though we don't officially, but if we don't do it, then we don't really teach it. Item G, consideration to accept the resignation.
Next one is Ryan McDonald, is that what I'm saying? No. O'Donnell. O'Donnelly. He worked one year.
Two.
Two. I will say something, I personally know my daughter had him, and by far, one of her best, best teachers she's ever had. He had the ability to make kids that didn't like math, love math, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart, this guy did a really, really nice job for our district. He has decided to leave education and pursue a career outside of education, and we wish him well in everything that he does.
What grade was that?
He was middle school and ninth grade math.
Seventh and ninth?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to...
Do we have a replacement already?
I'll second.
Motion by Josh, seconded by whom?
Kurt.
Kurt. Any other discussion?
Do we hire that one already, too?
All in favor of the resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Okay, Rob, now we're getting to your time. Consideration to post and hire an MSHS math teacher. Maybe we're gonna talk to the...
Yep, all the hires we want to do.
Sure, we did interviews in the middle of last week, and offered the job to Stephanie Berg, who is a second-year teacher from St. Louis, and she accepted, so we're looking forward to having her in our staff.
There always seems to be concerns about the number in the pool at this late date, and the quality of the applicant, you feel pretty strongly on, how many people did we get?
We had six applicants, of the six, one was not licensed for secondary, so we didn't[983.21][983.24]interview. And then one of them, by the time we set up interviews, had already accepted a position. So with math, science, any, any type of teaching position where there's kind of not as many candidates in the pool to begin with, this time of year gets pretty difficult to find a big pool to choose from. So I was actually pretty pleased, because I think when we hired Ryan, we had four applicants, and the teacher before Ryan, we had three, so I was pretty happy that we had as many as we did with this one, so. And I think Stephanie will do a good job, so we've got, she's got, you know, one of our bestest of mentor, and that, the math department does a great job of supporting teachers, you know, they just work really well together, so I'm pretty confident she's gonna have a good transition to our school.
I'll make a motion to approve the hire.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. You know, one of the things that we do face, and it's real, and I know that Rob is kinda thinking, what's happened here, we don't know that, you know, about the postings and such, but... It's, it's kinda difficult to call everybody together unless you're having a special meeting, and I think this is one of the cases that we give latitude to our administrators to say, post it and go through the process, and we'll, I guess ceremonially, ceremonially agree to the posting and such, because we really have to, otherwise, if we wait, there's two more weeks that are shot, so even though it feels uncomfortable for you sometimes, it's all part of the process.
It comforts you a little, but anytime this happens, I do give the board chairman a call, I always let him know if it's a, you know, if I know there's any time between meetings, so...
I know in the past, we've talked about the timing of it with the contract, and how late in the season that we seem to have let that go completely aside, you know, where they're giving resignations end up August, which the contract states it should be by one July. So I mean, are we going down a slippery slope, or one day we're gonna come up to, we're not gonna have a teacher, the resignation was given late into August in past practice as we accept no matter what? Do we need to curtail this, do we need to...
Well, when I, last year, when I did try to deny it, you know, you start a past practice kinda thing, and you're right, if we ran into a situation where we couldn't find a teacher, we would not approve their resignation tonight, you know, we would just have to fight that. But because the positions were able to be filled in their past practice now, is that you have allowed people to leave, I mean, we don't have a lot of leverage, unless you wanna change the contract to become extremely, you know, stringent.
You know, it directly affects the two principles, I kinda like to hear what they have to say about it, because July 1 is our, is our posted deadline.
Well, I don't think either one of us are really happy to be looking for applicants in July, because, again, you know, we'd like to have that piece of things set and settled, you know, well into the summer. In a case like, you know, in a case like with Mr. Donnelly, there's not a whole lot you can do, I mean, he's, if he was going to teach in another school, then he could potentially even, you know, maybe do something there, but he's, he's not gonna be in education, so there's, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do about it. It's a position that has to be filled, so we kinda just move on it as quickly as we can, so...
Wait, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, from the elementary standpoint, it's, no, it's not ideal to find teachers in August, I've done it, almost every year I've been here, though, and we've found some really, really great candidates. It's tough to deny something like that, you know, Eric, for example, he, it wasn't really his fault, he actually had applied way back in June, and their district shut down for the month of July, and that wasn't his fault, they called him back later in July, he accepted, you know, so he did everything he could to, to give us as much time as he could, but it wasn't his fault. Do we really, is it our place to, to hold that against him? That's a tough thing, because we don't want somebody that's not happy, not that he wasn't happier, because he loved his job here, and he had nothing but great things to say when he left, but that's an example where we're happy for him, just, we're ready to move on, we just wanted it as quick as possible, and that did a great job of pushing that, saying, listen, we need to protect our own kids here and staff, so please get, get moving on this, and he did his best to do what he could, and people take vacations and, and things like that in those months, and it just, it puts hardships on things, but ultimately, it's not ideal, but we may do, and ultimately, I know that between our backgrounds and our staff and the committee, and our mentor program, and our collaboration among staff, that no matter who we bring in, they're gonna succeed, and these kids are gonna be in good hands no matter what, so, and we still do get quite a bit of applicants, I'll talk about mine here shortly when we get to it, but...
I know we're getting a little struggling on time, but I, Rob's got a point, though, if we got a policy out there that says there's time, and someone goes against it, and they can come back on that, and it's like, oh, wait a minute, so-and-so did this, why can't I do this, and I think we're sitting...
Kurt, I will deny them all, that makes it a lot easier on me, and I did deny them all last year, and you all, you voted to override those, so...
I'm just, I'm just saying, there is probably a problem with that.
I would need you to back me on that, then.
Right.
You know, you would have to, because last year, no one backed those, and I did deny those, I even wrote in writing and denied those teachers, Mr. Urban was a good example, a music teacher, I denied it, and we loved him to go.
You can also be a little bit selective about how you go about doing that, I mean, and, you know, I don't know what your pool was for your fourth grade positions, you know, like, with my positions, you know, the number is so small, if it gets to the point where I don't have anybody to hire, then that would be something that I would, you know, I'm like Derek, I, if somebody has a better offer, it's better for them personally, better for them, their family, than unhappy for them, because I do think that we can develop good teachers here, because we've got the supports in place to do that. But there, there are some, and the timing of them also are such that, you know, if somebody next week decided that they wanted to resign to take a teaching position somewhere else, I absolutely would not be in favor of granting a resignation for that person, just because now you're talking about a handful of days before we've got students walking through the door, and it's way too difficult at that point to try to make that kinda change. Like, it's worthwhile for any reason, though, if they even if they're working in state education, maybe they have the contract. Again, there's not, well, again, there's not really a whole lot you can do, I mean, you can, you can go to the board of teaching and you can try to get their license suspended, but if they're not gonna be in education, that's probably not gonna make too much of a impact on...
Even your book comp.
You know, it's one of those things that we, we think about, because we're all private sector people, and a contract is a contract, is a contract to us, and then, but it's always been kind of the district philosophy, and I know a lot of other schools that say, you know, something, if there's a better offer out there and we can find a quality replacement, no matter what the date is, then we do that, or else we'll have an unhappy employee who may, he may not be a valued employee anymore, because they're gonna carry that with them. But Kurt's response is exactly right, do we, do we abolish July 1st, do we move it back to July 15th, or are we just gonna continue to just go on a case-by-case, and then it becomes past practice and it's out of our hands? So it's, it's, it's one of those things, I don't think is, we don't even get to discuss it, because it happens in such a hurry.
I'm just worried that, say, for instance, someone comes in July 10th, yeah, okay, we understand your situation, and someone comes August 1st and says, well, I can't grant you this, and they say, but you did someone else July 10th, and the policy says July 1st, we got nothing to hang our hats on here, we're, they wanna leave, they can leave, and now we're set without a teacher, and I'm just saying, it could impose a problem, you know? I understand exactly what you're saying, it's just, as a district, does it set us up for a problem?
Well, as tight as that contract is in every other part of the language, and having been in negotiations, it's odd to see that just as a, as a massive loophole, to say, that's okay, we won't really abide by it, but we're talking, picking words out of the contract that don't make sense in it, or changing the word for meaning to make it make more sense, but this whole area is just a wash through. And I agree, if, if we violated or we went against you in the past, I guess, that's an error, but it's in the past practicing, to me, I understand it, but I guess I don't agree that, okay, so if a decision was made at one point in a different direction, that should not set precedence forever.
And apparently it hasn't.
It needs to be a case-by-case basis, depending on when the resignation, and also, we could, we could approve a contingent on filling the position by the time it comes to the board.
Yeah, it's already been filled, so then, that's a contingent of those.
And my opinion is not much different than the principals, if they don't wanna be here, I don't want them here. I don't want a teacher, I don't have to, in elementary school or high school anymore, to be honest with you, but if my kid was in elementary and had an elementary teacher that put in for resignation, and we declined it, and now they're upset, what's my kid gonna get out of that teacher if my kid has a teacher?
I agree with your point.
Have you tried to revoke their license, that's just...
It's not gonna happen, I mean, that's really, that part isn't gonna happen, but I don't want my kid to have that teacher that just isn't happy here.
I could see if we stuck to our guns on July 1, for example, and the resignation came in after that, and we said no, if that was how we operated, that should be pretty much, if I'm gonna put in my resignation, I'm gonna expect it to be denied, but if we set it up to expect it to be approved...
Right.
Then I could see an unhappy employee, but it's the expectation, I think, we as a district set up for that.
I'm gonna add one little thing, just to keep in mind for the future, you need to have negotiations done and everything by June 30th. Right now, they're technically not under a contract, the contract isn't complete, okay? We're still in negotiations, and that's very typical, it's not any typical at all, we're not behind any other districts, it's not like the state of Minnesota is all settled, but technically, right now, we are still negotiating their contract, and we need to consider that, too, because when you call MSBA or the legal counsel, if I, you know, one of them was our assistant principal, I was kinda dead set on maybe keeping, you know, kinda putting our feet down on that. The principals are in a contract, so we could, you know, we could work with that one, but right now, we're still working on the teacher contract, so there's some loopholes there.
Let's do this, now that I started that conversation, let's move forward with it and present it as an agenda item that we can talk about. Okay? It's, it's worth our conversation premiere.
Right.
Item I, consideration to post and hire two elementary teachers.
Could you turn that over to Derek?
Derek? Yes, okay, so obviously, one is to fill the resignation, one is to base an enrollment, so just to clarify, we did have over 30 applicants, we interviewed eight, and of those eight, we probably had five that were really, really, really good, surprisingly good, in fact, I, you know, made a comment to the team, saying, how are these people not hired somewhere? And so we feel really great about it, the team, the fourth grade team, Kerry Schleifen and Walter are extremely excited about it.[1735.61]
Our first teacher hired is David Morgan, DJ, as he likes to be called, he did a long-term sub, I guess, job, kind of halfway through the year, working as an EL teacher in our building in Zambroda. Did a great job, connected well with a lot of the staff, and, you know, he's kind of got teaching in his family, and he is passionate, excited, ready to learn, ready to jump forward, so he does have a little experience, but not full-time classroom experience, but he's familiar with our building, and is ready to hit the ground running. Bob, do you want me to go on to the next one right away?
Yeah, it's all the same line.
Perfect, so the next one is Steven Marich, and Steven comes to us from South Washington County, and he's got two years' experience. He's got a great background in reading interventions, and interventions in general. Obviously, in our, in our school at the elementary, that's one of our focuses, is just making sure that we differentiate for kids at the lower level and the higher level, and just having that background and understanding of what interventions are at the different tiers is a huge asset to Cannon Falls. And that's one of the things that I think Carrie and Lynn were attracted to, is his knowledge of that, and again, his, you know, his family is in, his family is all about teaching, and his wife's a teacher, and, you know, so there's a lot of teaching involved, so he is very passionate about what he does, and excited, so. I think we lucked out, I, but, you know, it seems to, there's always, we always seem to find that, and I'm extremely confident in both of these gentlemen. But like I said, there's two others easily that I wish we had positions for, that were that great, at least from the two interviews, we did second-round interviews as well, because they were that good, we couldn't make the decision. So, just to give you some insights of how the process went, we ruled it down to four after we interviewed the first eight, so.
Derek, last spring, we had, we made a value judgment to cut or reduce in that third grade, now fourth grade, with the understanding if that enrollment increased by a certain number, that we would bring that back, and that, you know, we're procedurally passing that educator in without a lot of comment on it, so, you know, we've all kind of kept track of whether that was going to get up to that level, pretty closely.
Yeah, I have, every day, Terry's probably sick with me.
Could you discuss it?
Yeah, yeah, you know, Terry and I have been, especially Terry Soule, she's been extremely busy with new enrollment papers. Last time I talked to her last week, or asked her about it, it was 29 new kids, and I think she had another one today, and another one last Friday after I talked to her. It's a lot of tours I've given, but that's a great, that's a great thing. We've lost probably 10 or 11, I think we might have lost two more kids today, but not in that grade level, so. I don't know the exact number in that fourth grade group, but I know it's at least five kids, and the number we needed to hit was, we needed to net three of them, so. This would put us at all the classroom sections with 28 kids in a class, if we stayed at three sections, and I believe, if I remember correctly, you guys said that was not acceptable, and that you would add a teacher who needed the 28, so. Beth got the number and said, this is, this is all I needed to see, so. I know a lot of people are excited, the staff is buzzing about it, just because it was, it was one of those things where it was so unknown, and we had kind of hoped, and it caused some turmoil last spring, and ultimately, this is great news for the district, because this is, this isn't necessarily coming out of the general fund, because it, we've got most of the enrollment to justify, and so. Now we're bursting at the surface, it seems almost like kindergarten.
And what we keep telling people is, what if we would have lost seven kids in that grade? You know, we really have to be stewards of the budget, and we did the right thing by saying, and we kept our word, you know, we said, if it hits this number, we'll get that teacher back, and the minute you hit it, you called me, and I called Bob, and I said, we're moving forward, because, you know, we, you guys did a nice job of that outline of what you want your class sizes to be, and I just think this is a really good example to our community, that we do follow what we're going to do, because we could have very easily lost seven kids in that grade, and then basically been sitting with four sections, you know, we have to be very careful of that.
Four sections as well.
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve, I have two elementary teachers.
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Yeah, congratulations, that adds excitement to the elementary school, just by.
Very much, thank you.
Consideration to hire an associate principal.
Well, Sharon and I are very, very excited to have another female on the admin team. We interviewed some really, really great candidates, and, let's see, they like that. No, we interviewed really amazing candidates, and I think total, Tim, did I have 60 applicants in there versus the principal, 62? Very, very desired position, a lot of people trying to break into the ranks from teaching to administrator, but I'll tell you what, when we interviewed, Jen was just the candidate we wanted, we all agreed, and it was a really, really nice opportunity. So, we're really excited to offer Jennifer Shapie the associate principal position.
Principals, any comment? Went through the process?
Yeah, she's.
Yeah, I mean, we had really good candidates, it was a tough decision.
It was, it's very tough.
We had some good discussion about inequalities of the candidates, and I'm pretty happy, I feel like she's going to fit in really well.
She's definitely hitting the ground running, so, she's.
We haven't been easy.
Yeah, so, but it's, she's been great, she'll fit in well, the kids will absolutely love her, and I think the staff really will respect her and get along with her as well, so.
What you two don't know about us, because we had the conversation, I have no idea who this woman is, I will shortly, I'm sure, but I know what district she came from, being I only deal with, I don't know, a couple of 13, 14 different schools, minimum. The feedback that I got from that district is, we got a, we got a good one, very well organized, very good with the kids.
Yeah.
So, everything that you guys took out of that conversation, I got out of that school in conversation.
Perfect.
So, I was pretty excited about that, yeah.
Motion?
I'll make a motion right here.
Josh?
I'll second.
Kurt on the second. Any other discussion?
Is this for one more year, or is this continues, because this is funded by the state, correct?
This one is, we did offer a two-year contract, we don't, we can always reduce it, if we come to reductions next spring, we want to reduce that, but the only way that she would take it and leave her position in Immigrant Grove Heights was to get a two-year contract, so. But again, reductions can happen at any time, but it was only fair to do a two-year contract.
Thanks for reminding us, it is a two-year. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to hire an EdSIS teacher.
That one will be Mr. Bell.
Mr. Bell.
So, yeah, the EdSIS position came about through GCD, a grant written through GCD, and it's really what it is, it stands for Alternative Delivery Specialized Instruction Services, or something like that. Basically, in a nutshell, it's another support for kids who need it, who need extra remediation in reading especially, and, but it's a little bit more than that. It's nice, because we have the authority to make this person, you know, in front of kids, providing those interventions, but also a resource for staff, so we have a literacy coach, almost full-time now from GCD, but this is in addition to that, so. Chrissy Nelson is going to be, you know, filling this position, so she's coming to us from the community ed side of things, but, and she's excited about it, but it ultimately provides an extra little bit of leadership for the staff in some problem-solving areas, and also interventions that are directly impacting kids, so. We're excited about the position itself, but we're equally as excited about the person that's willing to take the job on, as, in Chrissy, so.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Jerry?
I'll second.
Josh on the second.
Is that a full-time position?
It is, yep, one-point-out, yep, and I think it's a two-year grant, right?
It is, we don't, we get the funding the year after, which is a little different and unique, Josh and I both weren't expecting that, but it's, yeah, it's going to be different.
Erica, this teacher's going to be establishing themselves within the whole elementary, is that right, just to go there for?
More K-2.
Yeah, it's going to be more focused, K-2 with kids, but ultimately, K-5 with the staff.
And this person will be on our seniority list, all of that, so when the two years is done, this person would have enough, you know, to go into another open position.
So, I have a different question, I don't want to stir the pot, but how does it leave Jake, she just came, she came from community ed.
Yeah, I'm working on filling it, I did post the position, and I didn't have much interest, so I'm working on filling it with current staff, and I'll find a way to fill it, I'm pretty confident in the people that we have, and some people are really excited about an opportunity to advance a little bit, and it's just licensure that I got to work out, because it's supposed to have a license to be in an early childhood coordinator position, so.
We might go use Sharon's license.
It has to be early childhood, yeah.
Sharon does hold that license, so we may talk to, she's technically a Goodhue County District employee, but they may allow her to use her license.
So, then, can I ask a different question?
That ties back to the elementary, you did withdraw those interviews, and you had, you picked the two, but you still had some candidates that you thought would be fantastic, would they be rolled over to a community ed position with the pre?
I actually called Jake as soon as I called the candidate back, and said, you know, if you're looking to fill this position, or whatever you decide to do, we talked literally right after I called the candidates, because, because it's such a great candidate, but it just depends on what we, what we ultimately decide to do with that position, but. Regardless, at least our number three for sure, possibly number four, we could look at for long-term subs, hopefully, you know, they're going to be subbing this district, which will open up opportunities possibly for later, and things like that, so. But he knows, he's been in contact, I think, one of the candidates actually contacted him as well, or was planning to, so, it's a good question, and the update.
And I've always wondered that, because we had a conversation Saturday at the football game, about, actually, it wasn't even really about this, we're just talking about preschool, community ed stuff in general. I didn't connect the dots until we just started talking about where that person came from, and we're talking about these teachers that are resigning late in the year, but are we taking somebody from Jake, and, which is, I'm good with, because to me, they're building in our school district, so don't misunderstand what I'm saying, but are we utilizing or pursuing people that we may not hire for a position for long-term, because obviously, a lot of these people are still looking and maybe not working, you know what I'm saying, is this how we've been doing it in the past, maybe we have.
Yeah, well, I always try to keep them on the shortlist, we're really proud of the candidates, I always want to keep them, keep them close, so.
Right, okay.
Erica, what's the licensure for the EdSIS position?
Elementary.
T-2's elementary teacher license?
Yep.
I just want, just for clarification, guys, that's, excuse me for asking, but EdSIS, this is, this is, is this a program out there, I guess I'm wondering, we didn't, we didn't budget for it right now, but we're going to hire, consider hiring. Now, the reason why we're doing this is because, are we seeing low scores, are we seeing, or why are we?
It's a grant, it's 100% paid for.
Excellent, okay, and it's for two years.
It's for two years, we have to qualify for the, what's even better is, they come up with a budget attached as well. No, that's okay, it does get very confusing.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You didn't read my email, did you, Eric?
I wouldn't go home, would you?
Oh, no, this is last night.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
No, using the key, you used it two weeks ago.
July now.
Okay, here we go.
I got a question.
We have a motion in the second.
So, Chrissy Nelson also does Cannon Kids as well, so for the person that fills that role, will they also have to fill in for Cannon Kids as well?
The way we're looking at it, I'm looking at it right now, is to have two part-time positions, one person to Cannon Kids, one to preschool, just because of licensure and the people who are interested, only if that's my current idea, so.
Good question.
Okay. We have a lot of discussion on that title, so, all in favor of the hire of Chrissy Nelson in the EdSIS teacher position, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to hire a .6 FTE music teacher.
That's Mr. Hedges.
Yeah, so Peter Duffin is coming to us from MTS, which is Minnesota Transition School, which is a charter school in Minneapolis. His position was eliminated due to budget reductions last year, so, he interviewed, I can't even remember back when we interviewed, the timing of this one was really bad, because I was on vacation, and both of our band and other band and choir directors were both on vacation, so. It was kind of a mishmash to get an interview together for that, so, but he accepted for the part-time position, really excited about Peter, he got a great recommendation from his former principal. He is used to not doing much, or he's used to not having, I want to say this right, he's used to not having much direction to go from, because he built the program at MTS from scratch, he basically, the principal said, this is what I want to see by the end of the year, and Peter was able to step up and do that, so. He comes from a, from a music program that is a little bit non-traditional, it's not necessarily, you've got band and choir, he did both, but he also intermixed a lot of technology with his lessons and the things, and that was one of the things that impressed me most about Peter was, you know, he didn't want to talk so much and answer our questions, he said, I want to show you what my kids were able to do, and what we're able to do using technology, so. He did some really neat things there with both choir and band, he ran the schools, kind of like we do with Battle of the Bands, he did that program. He's got, again, good technology skills, knows the sound booth, and the soundboard, and all that kind of stuff, so.
When he came in, he was telling me, he's excited to do things like pep band and things like that, and we've struggled, just because our current people are super busy with other things, too, but he's really excited to do those extras, and he also was really excited, he couldn't believe that we would let him sub in the afternoon, and he's like, well, I'll already be here, I can just sub if someone needs to go and sick or anything, and, you know, it was, it was nice, he really was thinking kind of outside the box, if he could run some of those extra things that we do stipends for, you know, so he had, you're right, I think he's just got some really neat ideas for our music program.
It was originally a .5, I thought.
Yeah, it was, I forgot when I put that in there, to give him prep time for him, so, we have to give him prep time.
Interestingly, I got a, I got an email from a very active band supporter, and, one, but, you know, I think there was a, an issue where they thought that position was going to be cut in its entirety, and they certainly felt a lot better knowing that it was coming back with, you know, with at least a halftime, and when I told her .6, she was even more pleased, and, you know, knowing the history about how we've wrestled with the position for at least six or seven years, I think this is a good alternative for us, and.
Well, I'm really hopeful, I mean, we have excellent numbers in sixth grade coming in, and we've got really good numbers in seventh and eighth grade that are still going to be there, so. I did make the decision early on, based on numbers, to combine seventh and eighth grade, both band and choir, so they are going to be practicing and performing together, and that, even when Mr. Bryan was here, he knew about that, and he was okay with it, so. But the numbers are looking really good, we've got about 50 kids in sixth grade, and we've got a little over 50 kids in seventh and eighth grade in band, the numbers in choir are a little bit, you know, seven or eight less than that in both of those, but I'm pretty happy. Now, the question is going to be, can we continue to keep those kids in middle school into high school, and, you know, the hard thing about that is, is, you know, Matt can attest, once you get into high school, there are so many things that you have to take, and unfortunately, we keep, the state keeps adding things that we have to take on, and they don't ever take anything away, so. The elective, you know, the electives have been hit hard in the last few years by some increased rigor in some of the graduation requirements in high school, and, you know, it's really those feeder programs in the middle school and at the elementary school that are going to be important to get those kids excited about things, and that's one of the reasons why I'm really excited about Peter, is because I think he brings a different spin on music, and I think that'll be a hook for a lot of kids, you know. There will be some things that he brings to that program that they may not have seen anywhere else before, so.
Is this position going to be focused mostly on the middle school then?
Yeah, at this time, because of, you know, I built the schedule based on who we had before, and to be fair to Mr. Duggan, I don't want to have him be here part in the morning and part in the afternoon, so, kind of had to look at, you know, where the majority of the classes are, and the schedule next year is built more middle school in the morning, high school in the afternoon, so that's, that's probably what we're going to look at. To be fair, though, that decision has not been completely made, because as soon as we hired Peter, Mike Leggled went off to Europe or somewhere on vacation, so we haven't had a chance for the three of us to sit down and take a look at the classes and find out exactly who's going to be doing what. Either way, the time that Peter's here, that'll be that same method that we've used in the past few years, where they co-teach, so there'll be two directors during the band, they'll be pulling kids from lessons from that, it's just a matter of, that's not going to happen in every band next year, because of the .6 position, but we will do it for some of it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Brenda, seconded by Josh. Other discussion? Brenda, you've advocated for band for a long time and you got us through some times when I thought maybe we were going to reduce much earlier. So, you've been the, you've been the.
I thought the email was, it came from you to him.
No, I think this sounds like a good compromise and, yeah, maybe he can do more with marching band.
Okay, all in favor of this hire, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry, consideration to approve the 1516 mentor program and stipend.
Well, I just want to start out by saying again, thank you to Kay Saban. I don't know if we thanked her enough for everything that she has done. But we have basically gone to the, to the ranks and Amy is in the room. She has decided to co-chair it with Lori Turner. We are really excited to have one person in each building. We think the connection with staff development is going to be helpful. Again, any stipend up to $5,000, you have to approve. This isn't ever going to get to 5,000, at least it hasn't in the past. I think the highest it's ever gotten to is like 4,100, 3,900. Josh, am I incorrect in those statements?
Ballpark, yeah.
Ballpark, you know, in that, but we have to prove it up to that amount so that staff development knows what to budget for. Going to look a little bit different with both the people being on staff. They're going to help us with the Friday back-to-school new teacher workshop. We're going to have some breakout sessions. We may have to get a couple of subs that Kay originally didn't need because she would come in and do those things without needing to get a sub. But this year, with the amount of new staff that we have, it is absolutely critical that we have this program. So, it is strongly recommended by me and the administrators that we continue this program. And thank staff development for supporting the finances behind it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion by Josh, seconded by Brenda. Any other discussion?
I agree with what Beth said. I think it's very important for our program, so I'd like to keep that going.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. You are correct, Brenda. Review the district's strategic plan, attachment aye.
You guys either had it attached or I think we sent out a, oh, you have it attached in there. You know, we have six main sections and, you know, once a year, I really like to sit down and work through this. We are going to be taking some of the information that Amy reviewed tonight and some of the things that Enrique's going to be working with, with technology. But our six areas are overall excellence and I think we've made gains in that area. We are currently ranked third in the HVL overall for the past 10 years. And Jennifer's putting on that data together for us, but we are just continuing to move up the ranks and move up the ranks in testing. So, we know that excellence is there. Tech and innovation, I think we saw some areas that we want to continue to work on. And we're not going to get into the fine details tonight, but I just want you to know where we're going with this. Partnerships with Mayo Clinic and the Rotary and things around town. I think, again, our ALC has made some of those connections. Actually, you know, ALCs over in Red Wing and more opportunities for our kids, I think we're creating those partnerships all the time. School climate, we did an end-of-the-year survey. It was basically administration, but also kind of testing some areas of school climate. Interesting that some areas feel, oh my gosh, best school climate we've ever had. Other areas feel, really struggle. And of course, I sent out the survey two weeks after we made reductions. That can always be kind of a tough time to do that, but overall, I think we're making progress. And the areas that were weakened, we will continue to work on those operations. I think we're all sick and probably tired of talking about operations, but we are really doing what's best for our school and making progress in areas of energy savings, in areas of improving our overall function of our school, making it comfortable for our students and our staff and those types of things. And obviously, fiscal responsibility is something we take very seriously on this board, I think more than ever. We have been extremely transparent with our community and where we're going. So, with that said, Kurt has been our member, board member rep. He's done a great job and we'd love to have him back unless there is someone else that would like to be on the strategic plan. Writing of this, and Amy was in on that, both the principals, there's a lot of people in this room that were in on that, it was a lot of work. What we need to do now is fine-tune that number two, the tech and innovation. I want to answer some of those questions that Amy posed to you guys tonight. And I think the best way to do that is have that a part of your strategic plan. Because then anytime you go to make a decision for your district, I reference this, it stays right on my desk. And then if I can ask that question and answer it with, with the materials that we have in here, you make better decisions overall. So, if one of you wanted to sit on that committee this year, we meet four, five times, probably four because we won't have to recreate all of this. If someone's interested in that or Kurt, you'd like to come back, we will be focusing on number two. And we don't need to make that decision tonight. I just think it's really important for you to know that this document is still being used and still something important to us.
I want to thank Beth and the administration and all the people on committee because they did a lot more work than I did. I mean, that's it.
Your input was really great though, Kurt.
Yeah, they did well, thank you.
You know, for continuity purposes, if you're willing to accept that, I think we just continue with you, if that's okay.
Are you in curriculum too?
Yep.
Oh, that works out really well then. If you don't mind, that really would work out well. Thanks, Kurt.
Even if you do mind.
All right, that's all I wanted to do with that. Thank you.
Okay, jumping down, that's a discussion item only, so jumping down to hours of fieldhouse discussion.
Right, we changed it this summer a little bit, basically because of Mr. Peterson. He runs it just a little bit different than Mr. Davison did and that's fine. But starting up this year again, we need to answer the question, do we want to go back to the way we were? And that was six to 10, six to nine, six to 10?
Nine, yeah.
Nine. Our custodians leave around 10, so we're closing up around nine. We have a secure door system, you know, the automatic locks, automatic coming in. That worked really well. We didn't see any real downfalls to it. Mr. Hodges, once in a while, had parents kind of walking, but if there was gym class in there, they would excuse themselves. I don't think there were many problems with that. The hours are a little different than the other problems we've had, like with basketball season or wrestling season and kids just kind of going into the fieldhouse. The solution to that is there's doors there, those could be locked. So that if you're at a basketball game, you can't just send Johnny to go play in the fieldhouse. He would actually have to go outside and come around.
Well.
Easier said than done though.
Yeah, they, they push open that door without seeing anything.
Exactly, so.
They can't get back.
They can't get back.
Wow.
And I know this is opening that can of worms again, but we continue to talk about it and yet I don't know and Dave doesn't know what's our final. Can we go back to six to nine? Is everyone comfortable with that?
Six to nine during the school year?
School year, and then the summer is different because we don't have custodians here at night. We can't have a fieldhouse open if there was a medical emergency or anything. I just want people at least here. And Jake and I have talked about this, we have to support Dave that in the summer, those hours just need to be. Plus, no one's really using it. It's beautiful outside. But once the school year, the nine months of the school year is going on, are you all comfortable with the 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
You know, until, until an event is over, there's, well, I shouldn't say that, until school is over, there's not really an issue because it's monitored by our teachers and who's ever there that sees issues deals with it.
Yeah.
I guess my question to you is, your budget looks so darn good. Shouldn't we be hiring somebody?
Yeah, we talk, we talk about this all the time and I think, if you can maybe look at it, I don't know, we've done it in the past and it wasn't worth their time. I think, I think if we do it, it's got to be like during the basketball game and later, like seven o'clock till nine o'clock or something like that. Because from three to seven, there's basketball practice and then, yeah, there's practice, all the courts are being used. So, I don't think it pays to have somebody there during the winter, during the school year. Maybe during volleyball games, you know, there's junior high playing there till about six o'clock and then you have people in there.
We have such a good relationship with the Shepherd Center. Would there ever be something where a stipend in lieu of there, I mean?
Yeah, we could certainly look into it. The other thing, if we're only going to have it open when the custodians are here, well, what do you do on weekends then?
Yeah.
You know, I'd like to see it open on weekends.
You know, that's when it is.
So, it was always professed to people and then when you pull in the range, we probably got a call, some was about the summer hours and how.
They've been reduced. It used to be, it used to be anybody can go in there at any time and we put an age limit on it and then we cut the hours back. We cut the hours back and now, right now, it's six to four in the summertime. You know, most people aren't done working at four o'clock, so.
And those call, that's the only phone call I have is that old line, the summer because I'm at home from work.
And it is nice because it's.
I get that, but I said, we've tried that in the past and we've even had paid employees sit there and we were, there was no one showing up. So, we're not going to keep it open just in case you might show up.
What if we did six to nine, but then did a supervisor from seven to nine on nights of events? We could try that and try to, I love his idea of the Shepherd Center. I mean, that's kind of a.
Weekends.
Oh, yeah. Weekend.
But we don't have the problems on the weekends. I mean, with the, the kids climbing in there and doing all that, we've never had, I haven't had a complaint on the weekends.
Calling Derek Madpats or something.
Yeah, but I'm saying is any, anytime there's an event is, yeah. Well, yeah, when you have the camera and the kid climbing up the thing and they, like, there's 200 people in there and they're watching, clapping, any point to the top.
It costs us $600 or $2,000 to fix the wheels on the, here.
Yeah.
So, what direction would we give fieldhouse? What direction would we give Jake? Should we look into a couple of extra hours of paid if necessary?
Yeah, I think you had a good idea with the Shepherd Center, especially during events, the seven to nighttime rate to start with, otherwise.
There might be people that take it because they want to walk. I mean, a supervisor could certainly walk in there too, you know?
And I have one, I hope, can of worms when I say, does that include the weight room too? Or is that just the fieldhouse if we bring someone in?
I wasn't at the last meeting, I apologize, but was any of that discussed for where are we going to go with the fieldhouse or the weight room? Is that combined or we leaving that for athletes or is this another subject where we're at with that?
That's a good question.
I think we need more or less a job description for that individual should be written up, including if that's going to be included. But again, they're there, what do they, what do they allow, what don't they allow, what are their options, what can they do? I mean, you hire someone to go in there and when do they step in, what do they step into, what are they authorized to do? Make a phone call, pick them out, take their names, ask for IDs, what's the school.
You may have some of that from the last time we had an employee there, there no.
A job description?
Kind of their guidelines.
Yeah, we had some, we had some guidelines. That was probably for, that was for our share character, but I'm sure we had something.
I think it would be a baby step towards what we're trying to fix.
I don't think they want to include weight room though.
What's that?
I don't think they want to include weight room. I think it's too many places to be at one time. If we already have Monday, Wednesday, Friday from, you know, 5:30 to 7:30 and.
Last time I checked in in the weight room for the adults, there honestly, there was one person in there. And when school ramps up, sort of the people come back, but I think that system's working.
That was a two-minute call, I see in the weight room.
Well, there was, there was one other person who was just leaving, so.
Why don't you take a look at that on our behalf and see, and I guess costs would be involved too. I don't know what, what we pay people to do that, but.
Sure.
Bring it back to us, you know, we're, I think we're all in favor of those hours to remaining.
Six to nine.
Yeah, I guess we.
I think you could make it similar to what you pay or put on the same pay scale as your helpers at Cannon Kids, possibly.
We just, I, I think that's our commitment when we build it and certainly some people have forgotten about that. But we want used, we want people in.
I agree. I'm willing to, I'm willing to, I don't know if proper notes are discussing, but coming from a coaching standpoint. When it's open, I always encourage my kids, come use the fieldhouse, you know, a Cardi Day, Humidol, whatever, use it up. I got equipment in there. I'd love to have them use a shooting system, a shooting gun. The weekends aren't open. I'll get phone calls once a while from a player, hey, can you, can you let me in?
They really don't like it.
If I'm home, I'll go let them in, but I don't feel right leaving them if I don't like them. But on the weekends, it seems to be the time when the kid wants to get, to use it.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's some sort of solution, it's compromised there too. If I'm home and my kids are there and I can take them with me, I'm fine letting the kid in and shoot around with them, but if I'm not.
One of the old hours on the weekend, six to six?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm remembering, all right, six to nine during the week and then six to six on the weekends. And then the building was locked down. It was just the fieldhouse on the weekends, so.
I'd feel real good about taking that out of your budget too, so. All right, good conversation. Bring us something back, please. Discussion, Tim Hodges to report on a SAD. The Chemical Health Initiative had monies to disperse and donated dollars to Cannon Falls for a SAD advisor for the upcoming year.
Yeah, Julie Hatch approached me at the end of the school year and said, hey. She had been our SAD advisor for at least three years before that and, and God bless her, she wasn't getting paid for doing it. And it was a pretty big crew of kids. The last year that we did it, I think we had over 30 students that were involved in SAD. So, this last year, she wasn't able to do it because of her change in job duties. But the county Chemical Health Initiative's had some money left over. And she asked whether I'd be interested in using that for a SAD advisor. And I said, that sounds awesome. So, we got a check from, I think it must have been the final disbursement from the Chemical Health Initiative. It was around $2,300. And I talked a little bit with Jake about whether we can stretch that into two years, possibly even longer, to fund a SAD advisor position. But it would certainly be something that I would hope you would consider. Once that initial amount is gone, that we would consider continuing that because it would be, it's a great group. It sends an extremely important message to our students. And those kids get active and I think it's important for us to be supportive of those kids in that way, so.
Do you think we could ever have them come, come to a board meeting and just make?
Yeah, we'll be reconstituting the group though this year. So, at some point this year, I would hope that we can get them in. As long as you guys are okay with approving it, then, then we can advertise and start looking for an advisor and getting that advertised. Because I think, again, it was something that was dropped last year, you know, since Julie couldn't come and have it in those meetings, so. But I'm sure that it will be something that kids will want to do again because it was very popular the years before that.
I'll make a motion to approve hiring a SAD advisor.
To discussion item, can we get away with that?
Yes.
We just did.
That's true. Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry, and we are, we are approving a SAD advisor using funds from the Chemical Health Initiative and supplemental with the community ed or what, what are we digging into?
No, no, just, it's, it's just that.
All right.
It's starting to splash.
When you pointed to Jay, but.
I saw it, I saw it.
So, I'll, I'll meet with Jake, we'll develop kind of a budget for, for Jerry.
See, you said budget and Jake in the same sentence.
I don't.
This sounds like our admin meeting, so.
It does.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Jumping on? It's item Q for crying out loud.
We haven't got to see it yet.
Appointment of absentee ballot board. I'll just read this to you, the Cannon Falls School Board appoints the following people to act as the absentee ballot board. These people will meet to accept and reject all absentee ballots that are turned in during the election of 2015 referendum. These are some of our people, but absentee ballots come through our building, so this is a natural. And we do need, we do need absentees to be checked on and approved. So, somewhat a formality here, but I would look for a motion to approve these folks.
No, the motion.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Josh. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Addition of the 9:14 work session at 6:00 PM, question mark? We need to have a work session?
Yeah, I'm going to hand this out. This is kind of part of my superintendent's report too, but since we're short on time, this will be good. We need to have a meeting on September 14th. Typically, we have one board meeting in September. We really need the second one. There is no way we can do everything that's got going on with the referendum without having some input. What I would recommend to the board is making that a work session night and making that your one agenda item. As you can see from this, and this is just something, you know, Lori and I were kind of putting together today. These are just, this isn't even everything on here. The referendum is an extreme amount of work, but we need input from you. We need to know the strategy that we're going to be doing. Are we, you know, are we making a list of items that would be reduced if the referendum doesn't go through? I have reached out to a lot of people to be co-chairs and haven't found those people yet. A lot of districts, actually all the ones touching our borders that are going for referendum are not doing the vote yes committee approach anymore. They're simply putting it out there, this is what will be reduced if the referendum fails. We need to have a meeting on that and we need to have a lot of guidance from the board. So, that would be my strong recommendation is that we have a meeting on September 14th and make it a work session.
And we also put a location to be determined. Sometimes, sometimes we step out and we're able to just meet without any interruption.
Have a little dinner while you're working. Sure, that's fine.
So, it's the 14th at six, location to be determined.
Correct. Six.
She'll lock your toes. Time to be determined too?
How about calendar?
Uh, 6:00 PM, shush, yeah.
We make that kind of a basic dinner. Get his wife, Tom.
So, do we have a motion from anyone on this work session?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Jerry, second.
I'll second it.
Kurt, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Board members. The more things we can merge, the better off we'll be.
I got, I just got one, even today, a person approached me and it's, it has to do with basically, I think this time of year because it's just practices that occur right before school. And there's some concern that, you know, well, this one concerns football and we'll address it that way. It's, they have practice morning and afternoon. And I think it came down because they had, practice was a week early this year and they had hired employees and they couldn't necessarily get away from work. And that, that made it difficult for them, you know, whether or not they can play versus not play, you know, do you. And I'm not saying they are, but there's concern that, you know, I couldn't make it to practice, you know. Do we look at that and say, the, the company that said, you know, we're having a hard time hiring athletes because they're, they have to go to, to practice morning and afternoon. And it comes down the last two weeks of school before Labor Day and they're kind of at a little bit of a loss for employees at that time because they have to go to practice. And I'm not saying, hey, they gotta go to practice, however, morning, afternoon, is that excessive? Can they get one practice in the day and not have to worry about that stuff? Where some will say, you know, football's more important than work. I myself, in the summertime, I think work is very important as well. And I think we as a board probably should look at that a little bit and say, what do we feel as a district as to what are we teaching our kids with work versus sports? And what's important, what's not, you know, can we, for those first two weeks, can there be exceptions to the rule? Something, something to consider. Doesn't have to be thought about.
I'd throw it this way to you, they had, they had all summer to work and they're a kid, let them be a kid. That's my opinion.
Well, I'm not, I'm going back to.
And, and then I will, in addition to say, even when I was in high school here, we had two days. So it's nothing.
And the state has already changed it. I mean, now they can only have two days, three days a week.
Yeah.
When we played, it was two weeks.
And the only, so the only thing that's changed this year versus other years is they end up moving it earlier a week than it passed years. Just because of the way that.
This is more, this, this is more just kind of discussion, we're not gonna get in too deep. Kurt, your point was.
My, my concern is the businesses are, are struggling with it and I don't wanna say that a student should be able to be, if it's, if a work employee says, employer says, you know what, I really need you here. Because that may actually be the case. I hate you for this, this time. I know it's sports are saying, but can you stay here? And then that a, a student doesn't have ramifications for that, you know.
I was told by a parent, and I don't know if it's true or not, he missed a practice this year, out three games.
Yeah, it's pretty, I mean, it is what it is, but I just wanna say, look, we're not just holding these kids responsible. We're holding these employers responsible. We're, sometimes like, I need you for those other two weeks, at least one time on the day. You know, I, you can, you can go early if you want, but you know, at least let's look at, you know, it's not just the student, it's employers. Employers are hiring our students and God bless them. And maybe we can work around that a little bit instead of saying, nope, this is what it is. You come in late, you're gonna do push-ups, sit-ups where you're out one game. I don't think that's fair.
When is your next group meeting? When is your next, I forget what you call it, committee?
Extra group meeting.
Extra, what do they mean?
Don't currently have, don't currently have on schedule, but.
Okay. Might be a good topic.
You know, in defensive football a little bit, the season did start a week early this year. And the second one, the state did limit the length of practices. So I don't think he wanted to go two days. He actually pushed forced you because you can only practice so long. And they said so much time in the middle and then you can have another practice and that's only every other day.
Sure.
So some of that, you didn't have a lot of control.
And I'm, no, I'm not blaming anybody. What I'm saying is, can we, for those two weeks up to Labor Day, is there any way? Because for some kids, that money means something too. You know, it's, we're, they're having to choose between a sport and finances and, you know, I'm sure, I would hope that they're trying to get to these practices. But when, when it's not gonna be available or it's not possible, do we just say, yeah, you get here when you can get here and for those two weeks, we're gonna let you work. And we'll get you when school starts, you know, that sort of thing.
And I guess, and your commentary though, but if the kids want to work, but they can't because they have to choose, that gets tough on them. Not if I don't wanna work, but up in football instead would be a different scenario, I guess.
Well, and I'll be controversial. If my, if, if my, one of my daughters was in that situation, I'd say quit your job. Play sports, be a kid, you have your whole life to work. That's me personally. And also some people aren't in that position to say that they're okay to do that. Some kids wanna make their own money and I get that too.
That's a, this, this was more of a reports, I guess, and it's, it's really a separate issue, but a, you know, I'm in complete agreement. Kids are kids and they're gonna have to make some choices here and they'll face them the rest of their lives. And if we, if we assist that process by saying, head coach, you gotta change your schedule to accommodate children, that isn't fair to that coach. That's my personal philosophy and, you know, I understand and respect what Kurt has to say, but point taken. But we need to, maybe that's a, another agenda item to discuss. Committee reports. Nothing on finance, Kurt?
Nope.
Nope. Policy? Do we have any committee reports at all rather than run through them?
No.
Okay. The only committee Jerry and I and Kurt are, are meeting and negotiating at this time. We've gotten through a portion of what we need to get through and we're still moving forward with meetings we're scheduled and we're scheduling on a regular basis, so.
This Wednesday, right?
Yep. Other committees, it looks like this is our lull time of year, so we'll just move into soup's report. Anything there?
I kinda went through the timeline. I know we're short on time and I know Matt's got a, a really big thing he wants to show you guys tonight. So I think I'm gonna give him a lot of my soup time if you guys don't mind.
No Dave, technology report, we've heard it. Principals report, anything for the cause?
Uh, we're getting ready for school start.
Really, was this for the point, wasn't it?
Uh, let me just say one thing real quick, you know, we're gonna have some changes with our playgrounds. I just wanna give you a heads up of that. At the elementary, we're just kind of looking at, looking at order, working with Dave and Beth, just identify. One other, two other things I wanna mention, we're, we're doing an honor retreat from Youth Frontiers with our staff at the elementary. First day of workshop next Monday and I think that's an exciting thing. The paper will be there, so I'm excited to share that with the community. Should be a fun day. And lastly, our local Rotary donated two thousand dollars to the elementary for the beginning of a book room. So I'm excited I get to buy some books. So thank you to Rotary and, and all of those members, so excited.
Jake?
I'll just touch on two things real quick. One is high school sports and the other one is preschool, which explains the scope of my job a little bit. Eighty-two preschool registrations are now down a little bit from last year, but usually we take registrations throughout the course of the year. It's hoping to be at ninety. So hopefully by, you know, Christmas time, we'll be back up at ninety, like I said, right eighty-two. Fall sports registrations are good, up thirty-two from last year and the biggest jumps for football and girls soccer. So girls soccer, we'll have two teams this year, so very good.
Yes.
So thirty-two fall, more fall athletes.
Yeah.
That's remarkable. That is fantastic.
We were down last year quite a big number where we're at, so we're back up to where we were before last year.
Yeah, I didn't look to your background, so.
Okay, Matt, you've been patiently waiting for a presentation to us.
All right, so I'm gonna pass out some numbers for you guys and you can look at them while I do a little explaining. Oh, yeah.
Want me to pass them up pretty much?
Sure.
See, I was good at elementary school like that.
All right. So I was given this task a while ago to make a school logo slash crest for you guys. And at first I was gonna go off of sort of like Ryan's precedence, but Mr. Hodges and I found that the binder was missing. So I basically had to come up with something on my own. So I'll pass this out, do a little explaining for you guys. So the plan is to have it on a T-shirt, a black T-shirt. And the colors are gonna be red and black and white and I'll explain why, why it's involved. On the slogan part, you can see Bombers Strong and you can't have black embroidery on, uh, black fabric. What we're gonna do is have, uh, black embroidery along with the white embroidery instead of the label puncher, which I had to use because I'm not great at that sewing. So what I found to be common in most school logos, and I believe I looked at a lot of them, is that you gotta encompass the school colors and you gotta create something that we can all be proud of, something we can look to with pride. Not be too much to like overwhelm you, but something that can just take into your mind and really respect it and cherish it. I talked to Melanie, who works at Cannon Valley Specialties. And I don't know if you guys like wanna keep this logo to yourself. I don't know if you wanna like put it out there for everyone else to use. That's like one question I had. Do you have an answer to that?
I think.
What are your thoughts?
At one time we were, yeah, at one time I think we were looking for something that was universal and I think that's what Mel Carlson was looking for. We got a lot of different designs, a lot of different T-shirts and, and other things that represent Cannon Falls. So I think our original intent was just to bring it into maybe one.
Okay.
I, I think, I'm thinking that differently. I think that was the logo. This is the district crest.
So this would be like letterhead.
This is letterhead. This is more the crest. I think the town would kill us if we got away from.
I was confused. This is our official crest that we're.
The academics, artists, all those kinds of things.
New.
I do know that if this is approved, they'd love to put that like on the rock, you know, painted on the rock or kind of get those things coming out. Is that what you thought, Mr. Hodges too, that this was more the crest? The logo is different.
When we started the conversation a couple of years ago, it was really, I think there were so many different kind of mascot-y type of things that everybody used that we thought we would look at for something different and that's where we came with the idea of the crest. And I, I believe that's when Ryan graduated. He was in the midst of designing that and looking at some, you know, some words to show district values to go on that crest at the time, so. But again, binder disappeared.
I thought from day one, we were looking at this as a, as our official Cannon Falls sports logo and other. All this time, Nora's shaking her head, yes, she thought the same thing.
Didn't get email, did you?
That was the crest.
Yeah, it was the sap for.
So, yeah, I was thinking, okay, so we got the bombers, you know, we got the bomber embroidery would be shooting out of the cannon. And it's up to you, guys and girls, if you want Cannon Falls, if you want the falls up here and the bombers down here. Or any other changes that you would like. I'm really open to any suggestions, but this is what I thought would be the best district.
Could Melanie make that into a, a scan? Usually her computer can do that and then put those two options and then maybe the student body could vote or something? That'd be kind of fun.
Yeah, I don't think that's hard this year, that's here.
Okay.
I think that'd be really cool if you could present that to your, maybe ninth through twelfth or maybe make it student one. Maybe the kindergartners would love picking between a couple. But I think if you gave it to Melanie, she can scan it under there and she can make kind of a template for you in both ways and then have people vote.
Yeah. Yeah, so when we get to the, you know, wrote, she said that an art time charge, forty dollars to get exclusive rights to you, the board. Is that something that you?
Maybe community ed could pay for that.
But yeah, when it gets down to that time and then, here are some of the price points. I mean, I just made a model and here's some price points. For example, twenty-four quantity, eighteen dollars per shirt. Uh, she told me that you can sort of mismatch in a way that you can get twelve T-shirts and twelve long sleeve tees. You can like do, like split it twelve and twelve for like a category and that'll be easier for us. If the shirts are used for a fundraiser, and I don't know if you ever wanna head down this road, she would be willing to detox fifteen percent for the prices above if we were to make it into a fundraiser.
Certainly would like to see that what Beth has said, put it on the table so you can take a look at it, but.
Yeah.
I think if nothing else too, even if we don't, Matt, go this route, how proud would that be to have it on the principal's letterhead, my letterhead, on our school webpage? I think there's something really powerful about a crest. I noticed when other districts, when they submit forms, you can, they don't always add their logo, but sometimes they'll add their crest. And I think I would, even if we could get that done this year and maybe not go the route of clothing or anything that first year. I mean, you'll probably still see that in your senior year happen, but just to get it off the bat and we're, keep working with Mr. Hodges on this. I, I just, I think this is really, really great and I think having the ownership of the, the student body picket would be cool. And I would feel very proud to add that to my letterhead. I think that'd be really neat.
Thank you.
Should work on that.
On clothing, are we talking that it would be a large center or are we talking just a small breast?
I did talk to her about that and I thought maybe a side, but she said for size and proportion reasons. It would be more effective if it were to be in the center of the T-shirt or the sweatshirt or the hoodie.
The other thing is you can get those screen prints where we could put it up in this room somewhere too.
I also talked to her about potentially maybe a banner. I think a banner would be very effective, but we're still in discussion on that, whether that could happen or not.
You've done a lot of work done.
Yeah, thank you for the work on that and we're gonna demand you continue that work.
Okay, upcoming meetings, you know about the nine fourteen on the workshop?
All referendum.
After that, nine twenty-eight, and these are the items that we have on there. No matter if the next one is all referendum, we have to keep one eye on that referendum for all of our subsequent meetings, so. Just keep that in mind. There's a lot of questions and details that have to be worked out, but we're committed to it. So we, and if you have any other things that you wanna put on this agenda, please contact Lori or Beth and we'll see that they get on.
Lori has something for you. Sharon reminded me, coronation is the fourteenth, that makes your breakthrough decision. Oh, I have to be a coronation. Should we just say that we will have it during the week of the fourteenth, maybe?
Twenty-fourth. You're saying be flexible enough to move it on to one of those other days?
Was that on the calendar?
What, and that's a Monday, right?
That would be the Monday.
So if you don't want to, there's fishing or something.
Yeah, yeah, you have to go camp.
Yeah, is it all right if we amend that to, to give us a flexibility of having it somewhere during that week's time? Are you good on that?
Or can everyone make it on the fourteenth?
No.
I'm assuming not, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, let's not.
We'll work on it.
All right, we'll, we'll continue on just trying to formulate a correct time. All right, it looks like we've got all of our business taken care of this evening and it was a busy, busy evening. So I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Brenda. Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're done.